Please join me in pledging allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the law, and to the United States of America, and to the Constitution of our Constitution, and to the Constitution of our nation, and to God, and to the people of Texas. Board, you have been provided a copy of the minutes from the December fifteenth and January seventh meeting. I trust that you have taken the time to review these minutes. May I have a motion to approve them? May I have a second? Is there any discussion?
Justice.
All in favor of approving the minutes, please raise your right hand. Board, if you will find a copy of the December twenty twenty financial report, may I have a motion to approve the financial report? May I have a second? Is there any discussion? All in favor of approving the December twenty twenty financial report, please raise your right hand. I now turn the meeting over to Mr. Paul.
Thank you so much. As you call well, Board, we have several presentations tonight on our agenda, and I'd like to begin with inviting Mr. Salz from Enterprise High School, Mr. Clenny from ECTC, Mrs. Beckham, she's here. She may not be here, so... Oh, she is here, I'll ask her to come forward as well.
Okay. I want to go ahead and start with mine, this teacher of mine, Ms. Allison Hancock, it's a student of Mount Lake, teacher of mine for us. She's been working at Enterprise High School for a while now. I'll say this, she inherited AP US History program from Maine and was a campus with it when I was in a scholarship. It's an honor to present her as recipient of the day. While she's been at the high school, she has served as AP teacher of US History, as both a resources and as a mentor. She's someone that she, at all times, she'll give up her time to do anything that needs to be done at school or as far as with her students. She gives up planning, she's helped as a mentor to new AP teachers, we've got new AP teachers. She's been here with tenth grade in US History and eleventh grade in US History, traditionally good, so she's helping with that. She worked closely with administration and her colleagues, helped to improve the effectiveness of the program. She's been very instrumental in planning for AP testing, that was one thing last year, meeting David, coordinator, that I didn't have to do because of the COVID, but she helped out his meals for years, hard for that. She puts an extra time in effort with any duty that she has. And with that being said, remember, the greater her question was never subject for many of that. When that failed each and every year, their students have scored well, and AP US History, that exam was one of the tougher ones, not the toughest one, as far as those kids are taking it. We don't get invited, we're scoring a one to five, and five being the best. And every year, we see as far as the percentage of the students that she teaches at Enterprise High School, with a high percentage rate of passing the career better. She gives a hundred thousand dollars credit, and every year, with the number of five, it 's a lot for her as a teacher. Every year. Her students love her, she is very aware, cares down, she has high expectations for all of her students. And all of her devotion of academics is just above and beyond. She's always up with extra pre-课程 programs over the years. She served as SGA sponsor, she was scholar bowl, which we've had success at as far as talking about. And she's been a blessing to have Ms. Hancock a part of Enterprise High School with that. That being said, thank you, Allison, for bringing you down to Enterprise High School. The... She's so excited by it.
The senior of the month is Daniel Diego. Daniel, when you take off, you're back in his mother, sitting here today.
Daniel, we're very proud of him for what he's accomplished at the DHS. As a young man, he's definitely got a bright future ahead of him. This is his senior year, he's worked very closely with the counselors to figure out what path he wants to do in life, where he wants to go. You work at McCalla right now?
Yes, sir.
If you work at McCalla, you can actually say hi to him.
I give you a fifteen percent discount.
He's worked very closely with counselors and also with the College Career Center, Ms. Brodmann, Ms. Hoagie, I've worked a lot with them, and they do a great job trying to help kids out to figure out what they're going to do, you know, what path they're going to take, and having an impact on the rest of their life. In fact, as a member of the class of twenty twenty-one, he was awarded the first scholarship, okay? And all the scholarships he had at the high school, he's interested in automotive engineering, and he has mapped out his own plan with some help of Ten Wallace Community College for a couple of years, and then wants to transfer to Auburn. So worry no matter. Our career coach, Ms. Brodmann, speaking to her, and I don't think Ms. Brodmann's here to die, but speaking to her, she has discovered a couple of how impressed she is with Daniel, and how serious he takes everything as far as the planning of his future, and trying to take advantage of everything that's offered him at Enterprise High, to make that happen. He's taken the initiative, he's gone to Auburn, I've got one that's graduated from Auburn and one at Auburn, and I wish they had the type of initiative that Daniel's got here, where he's going up there, and he's actually talking down, and as far as making sure the classes that he takes, Wallace, to transfer to the program, and he's here in program at Auburn. So he's very clear for that. Mr. King, if you can, Mr. King and Mr. Puzio at ECTC, they're awesome, very fortunate to have him. Mr. King told me how hardworking and extremely bright that Daniel is as a student, and he's great for the whole team environment that they have going on. His class is a team, since he's worked with Daniel, the Extra Pre-课程 Technology Student Association, with the best robotics team, which I don't know a lot about the robotics team, but I know that they have been very successful with what they've been doing with that part. He's always spot on, brings his best, he's a well-rounded young man, who sells in many areas, and that's taken, and he sells in just a whole mix of advanced placement classes, and career check classes, and even far as elementary classes. So I'm very honored to present Daniel Diego as the enterprise senior of the month.
I'm here to present with the board, ladies and gentlemen, and this name is Ben Edwards, and he works at temperate all kinds of program with me. And all I can say is it's a shame that everybody can't have a Mr. Ben, because Mr. Ben is a breath of fresh air, he's always there, he's always willing to do whatever he wanted to do. He has been working with our school systems since nineteen eighty-three, and thirty-eight years that he has been with our school system. He has worked at Compton Hill, the old Compton Hill, the entire term. When they built the new school, he didn't want to go with it, and he didn't want to leave his building, because he loves his building, it is his home, and he thought he had his second home, and he's really there working here in any place there. I know that Mr. Ben is always going to be there, my building is always going to be open, his hours are seven to four, and I've tried to convince him, because he gets fed about five o'clock every morning. And I'm like, Mr. Ben, I can spend ten hours, and six to three if you buy me food. He's like, oh, no, because if I come, man, I want to get to see those children when they get off the bus, the Boys and Girls Club, and he wants to be there to be the first person in the group, and then later they get off the bus. Any, the kids love him, they can't wait to see him, he's always happy having him, he's always encouraging him. If he sees them getting in trouble, he's going to pull them aside and try to talk to them and tell them that they should better their ways, and that they should try to think about what they've done, and they don't want to disappoint us, I have to be honest. And I honestly, I don't want to disappoint Mr. Ben either. You know, I tried real hard, but to keep Mr. Ben happy, because he is there for us, and I just, I wish I had five, Mr. Ben, because he's, they don't make him anymore. And I wish he was not able to be here tonight, but I wish he could be here to hear the recognition, know how much he's appreciated, because he told me this morning, I was talking to him, he said, oh, Mr. Ben, I've been doing this stuff before that. My great daddy was a custodian at Old June, and when I was little, I used to go to work with him, and he all came when I went to school. And he said, I love my job, and I think everybody should love their job as much as I do. And I thought, I don't know what else to say, other than that. And I guess if you don't love your job like Mr. Ben, then why you should die happy? And I just said, thank you, Mr. Ben, and I have to go.
I do want to say one quick thing about Mr. Ben. He loves to cut the grass, and he did not want the maintenance crew, the grass crew to be out cutting the grass, because he likes to do that. So several years ago, the board purchased him with a really new, nice John Deere, he wrote churned lawn mowers, and it took him just a little while to get the hang of it, because he accidentally knocked a couple of air conditioning units off. Once he got the hang of it, he's a pro now, and he's very proud of it, and he has it in most of our cars. So he really takes care of the equipment, he's outstanding, and he can do an outstanding job, well, fantastic. Board, as you know, or may not know, Daniel, we're here, you're a board member appreciation month, and we just want to send our gratitude to you for all your hard work and training and everything you put into making our school system great. And so at this time, I'd like to invite our elementary school principals, they're here, for a special presentation.
On behalf of not only elementary school principals, but all of the members of our system, let me say a big thank to all the people on the way along, the extra time that you guys made that building. There are so many that have departed out of state to be a member of the school board. And as a citizen of a school system, I am charged not only with the educators, but the support that they have in the school board. And of all my years here, I can honestly say that we've never had a school board that was not supportive of the local administration. I appreciate what you do to give us support, to help feed our high school system, it's like about nine. It was a small thing, but I appreciate it on behalf of the elementary administration of this year. And again, with some people watching us, and the passion we bring to doing things, and much more, coming to help with the nineteen hour school system. Thank you for letting us sit, and for letting you on.
We get to show how much next year. Board, due to COVID-related issues dating back to March of twenty twenty, as you know, educating our students has been a tremendous challenge. And so at this time, I'd like to invite Karen Bells, Mary Graham, and Jason Stumpf to the podium to talk about student progress within our schools, and any available learning gaps that may be present, and how we're going to use our resources to address those issues.
All right. Good evening, board members, Mr. Paul, employees, and other guests. This time last year, I presented to you a system report card and related to testing. Due to closing school early, we were unable to administer most of our spring assessments last year, and therefore, a state report card will not be issued this year, and we have no new test data that's available. However, school leadership has been concerned about the gaps in learning that have impacted our students and have been digging deep into our progress monitoring results to determine the best course of action to assist our students in closing learning gaps as a result of school closing in March, virtual learning, and the challenges that go with all of those situations. School leadership realizes that the most recent data shows declines in some areas as compared to data in September. We believe the current results are a more accurate picture of the progress of our students. There is no replacement for in-person instruction and assessment, and we realize many of our students do as well on assessment upon their return to school. Student assessment under a more normalized testing environment with their teacher results in more accurate data. The first step was to determine the specific skills our students are weak in or show no progress in, and continue progress monitoring throughout the school year to make immediate adjustments to instructional practice and resources. School-based leadership teams meet each month to evaluate student growth and make adjustments to instructional resources, pacing, and support. Our current runners monitoring in grades kindergarten through sixth using iStation, the new program for us this year, pointed out that we must also continue challenging our highly cheating students to ensure we have resources in place to help them continue to grow. In our elementary schools, there are many strengths as a whole as it relates to student growth in the area of reading, and those include in kindergarten, we showed a strength in listening comprehension and phonemic awareness. Schools with a high population of English second language learners did not show strong proficiency initially with phonemic awareness. That subgroup has continued to grow, but the school leaders indicate that they'll continue to have to focus on that need. In first through third grade, vocabulary is of strength, and in fourth through sixth grade, we continue to be strong in reading comprehension. In our elementary schools, many of our schools demonstrated weaknesses in the following areas. In kindergarten, letter knowledge, vocabulary, and in schools with a high population of our DL students, there's a weakness in phonemic awareness and text fluency. First through third grade, text fluency, phonemic awareness, and spelling are weaknesses, and in fourth through sixth grade, text fluency, word analysis, and word analysis and vocabulary. And also, our sixth grade has been identified as an area of weakness of spelling. In overall reading, grade levels kindergarten first, fourth, fifth, and sixth show positive increases in the number of students achieving at or above benchmark, and that's comparing from the beginning of the year to the most recent test data. And iStation is our new progress monitoring tool we use for our students in grades kindergarten through sixth grade, and we also use products within this platform as resources like iSIP and iStation. That platform has a lot of resources for an area of reading, and we also plan a program that's in wonders and desire. Gaps in mathematics have proven to be a struggle for us this year after closing school last spring. Teachers work hard to provide online resources to our students learning from home, but direct face-to-face teaching was missing piece in our delivery of new content standards. Structured practice with a teacher and cooperative learning will help fill gaps. In elementary, current strengths in math include kindergarten number sense, and in first through third grade, computations and algebraic thinking. In fourth through sixth grade, we're strong in measurement and geometry in the fifth and sixth grade. School leadership teams meet on a regular basis and have been planning for more intentional structure to reduce the gaps in math. Currently, our elementary students are struggling in the following areas. In kindergarten, measurement and data analysis, and first through third grade, number sense and geometry, and in the fourth through sixth grade, number sense, geometry, and measurement data analysis. Because of the early school release last spring, there are gaps in delivery of instructional standards necessary to be successful with acquiring a new skill. As we all know, math skills build upon others, but new skills are rarely caught in isolation. While teachers are providing instruction on new content standards, there is a struggle with being able to tap into prior knowledge since many skills weren't caught at the end of the school last year. Also, some standards are caught later in the school year, though students are tested on those standards in the recent administration. Math coaches are meeting with the administration teachers to provide instruction, modeling, and coaching as these gaps continue to unfold for us. In overall math, grade levels kindergarten first and fifth show positive increases in the number of students achieving at or above benchmark. Our resources we use in kindergarten through sixth grade for math include Reflex, iXL in some schools, and to support our math curriculum in Baytown, New York, teachers use either Math Modules, the Hell Hill Capacity, and the Read the Math in Pink, which is used to meet the needs of our virtual students. Expended data services continue to be available for our students in its free after-school mediation with certified teachers. In seventh through eighth grade, reading scores show a system-wide increase in at or above benchmark scores for both grade levels from the beginning of the year. The percentage of students needing urgent intervention category is decreasing. Most schools were able to move students from on watch, which are those students who are close to being at benchmark, to the benchmark, the at benchmark category, and most schools were able to test more students on this most recent administration since more students returned to traditional classrooms from being a virtual student. Teachers, instructional partners, and administration continue to meet in most schools, and the resources we use are Edgenuity and Refund eighty. Math at the seventh and eighth grade score is an indicator of weakness in the area not yet covered in the curriculum. Geometry and measurement are still taught in second semester, and most schools were able to move students from on watch to at or above benchmark, though we didn't have as much success in the area of math as moving those students out of urgent intervention. Resources include Edgenuity and Math one eighty. At the high school, students are tested the same semester they are enrolled in English nine, English ten, Algebra one, and geometry. In comparison from the beginning of this school year to the most recent progress monitoring, ninth grade reading showed an increase in at or above benchmark, and also an increase in the number of students needing urgent intervention. More students were tested due to students coming back after virtual student, being a virtual student. And the tenth grade reading showed a slight decline in at or above benchmark and an increase in the number of students needing urgent intervention. Resources we use for reading in secondary schools at the high school is Read Naturally Program. We use a program called Rewards, and we use Refund eighty. In math scores in Algebra one, it showed a decrease in the number of students that are achieving at or above, and the number of students needing urgent intervention there was increased. Many of these students will take Algebra one all year, and some standards have not been taught, even though they were tested. A number of students have been virtual and have struggled with math tests to be in problem lines. In geometry, our students are in the at or above benchmark category, that was an increase there, and but we also had an increase in the students needing urgent intervention. Our math resources include Math one eighty, we have a really strong in-school focus program, and again, they have the after-school tutor. Several times this evening, I have mentioned the unique needs of our English as a second language learner, and over the past several years, we have seen a notable increase in the enrollment of DL students. We have identified their needs and put in place several resources and supports that help them. For example, we have purchased, provided professional development, and implemented the program Elevation Strategies, iRead, and Brain Pop, DLL. In addition to these programs, our school employs a district-wide DL specialist who works closely with our regional specialist to provide professional development to our teachers each night reading. Our district-wide DL professional development team meets every night week to discuss teaching strategies, concerns, accommodations, and other needs specific to district students. Our secondary schools also provide sheltered instruction in English and history. So at next board meeting, we are back on track with our state testing programs this year. Our tenth and twelfth grade students have already taken the Free ATTC and WordPies, and our DL students will begin taking their ACT test in the next couple of weeks. Our spring testing for second through eighth grade, the ACAP summative and alternate, will be administered in April, and there's an expectation from our state superintendent that all students will participate on campus, for those who can't. Our eleventh grade students will participate in the ATTC in March. We're looking forward to having all of the national and state national test results available to us this summer, along with a year-long progress monitoring to guide our plans to continue to address gaps as we see our students learning and growing, and also while working with our higher cheating students to keep them learning and growing. We have faced many challenges this year, and we'll continue to work hard as a team to help our students grow and learn.
Questions?
Mr.? Should obviously run out of the room. District of seven, it's a check, it's probably across the United States. So you mentioned a lot of resources. Are there any other resources that you think we may need, that we don't have?
Well, sorry, elementary, well, it's hard telling, and we've been dear folks, and have always different funds available to us, and so, which we felt like we needed, if we hadn't purchased it, although we were in the process of purchasing it, purchasing it, but we did, so we're not just that.
One thing that we have that a lot of people don't realize here at Enterprise, and it's because we have such a supportive board, we have somewhere in the neighborhood of fifty-six to fifty-eight locally funded teaching events. That's extra, above and beyond what the state actually provides for us, okay? Most school systems have zero, okay? So what that does, that allows us to have smaller class sizes, more support for students who need intervention, or guidance counselors, or administration at the assistant principal level. The challenge for us this year, I mean, we've got resources, we don't have time, because we have situations where students, we have students who have been quarantined four times, and they've not been sick. So you're talking, you know, a large number of days out of school, and it's really, really hard to move up. I mean, yes, I mean, that's an obstruction for them at home, but again, it is not the same thing. It's very, very difficult. So time is the most valuable resource, which, you know, that's been pleading for us since, you know, since March. But we're very fortunate to be able to find those units to make sure that we've got actual resources, human resources for our students.
And different schools have different resources that include, and it depends on the specific needs of their school. For example, here in Crewe, you have a large DL population. Her resources have never been a little bit different than other schools. But there's many more, but that is school system, that's the main one that...
Have we reached out to any systems around the area? We're all dealing with, like I said, everybody's dealing with the same challenge, but they may have another creative way that after some of that, I don't know. I'll just throw that out there.
We meet, but there's no other school system in this area that has what we have.
Well, I understand that, but they may have a different technique from what we're solving.
Yeah. We meet superintendents periodically. We're all facing pretty much the same challenges and going after it in pretty much the same way. I know the things are really difficult now, but how about the kids, are they looking on them now?
You mean the virtual students?
Yes, ma'am.
They still a child.
Yes, ma'am.
They rarely get that, isn't it, very much a challenge?
Do you have a percentage of kids that should be non-look-alike, that are not looking like that?
I would say the high school, the first semester, we had about three hundred and fifty that were virtual. And then what happened is the, we were, a lot of them that were not being successful, we were begging them, we put an exam, we talked to parents, trying to see if they'd come back. And then, of course, after the semester ended, and good majority, about a hundred and twenty-five did come back.
Yes, sir.
Of that, but then we had a war become irrationally, because we began to smoke the war on the nav policy, but they're picking up, and they, some of them are now wanting to go work for us this time. But I don't have a high percentage, we aren't telling you, I mean, it's a large percentage of them are not being successful enough right now, just because they don't have the support system at home a lot of times. If you pay for really, make sure that you're doing really good, and if it's sitting the top, then you're the boss.
The challenges, again, are very similar from school system to school system, most school systems, most of their superintendents are there, toying with the idea of just requiring everyone to come back, especially if, you know, K through two, because it's so critical of those students being in class and being able to learn how to read, because they're either, you know, the day where they're non-readers, emerging readers, emergent readers, all those different kinds of readers. all those different kinds of readers, but very, very early reading literacy skills that they're missing out on at home. So that's one thing that is a little bit different that we decided not to do. Just right now, but everything the way they did, I feel like our parents still need a choice. Either keep their children at home or bring them to space on their personal situation. But three hundred fifty or twenty one hundred plus is not that bad. It's not that bad. We're less than eight percent right now. And we also have children who are at home and doing just fine and doing very well. And there are students who are just maybe a little bit more academically inclined, a little bit more self motivated. And we've said this before, you know, when you're at, when you're at home trying to learn, there are a lot of processes in place. Not just for the student, but for the teacher as well. And sometimes, you know, especially middle school boys, like I've been at my house, they don't do real well with that. And certain kids don't, some kids be really, really well with it. I have one that didn't do well at all, I have one that did pretty well with it, but it just all depends on the kid. Well, we do have, we do have students, point in front of me, that do very, very well, we have a lot of them who are also that don't. Jason, you're not the. Were there any more questions? We are batting around plans for next year within the addressing learning loss this summer as well as next year. Depending on the resources that we have coming in, and so we're meeting on those things. Actually, we may want to, we may be meeting on a little bit more formally this week, we will get to next year. Well, or a few months ago, you approved the reconfiguration and rezoning of our elementary schools for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year. And we have what we believe will be a successful Alex plan, we will support. And Mr. South is going to go ahead and present his plans for the upcoming school year.
All right, so, um, another challenge, before I start, there's another challenge we're starting to see, is even with the extra training we're trying to provide, it's hard to provide training for our teachers like we normally do with PD because we have so many absences uncovered by facilities. But teachers during the hunting period are having to pull together and, you know, watch the other teachers go out. So that creates a big burden for the teachers. I'm at the high school, we've had a really big problem with it often, just this week, it's experienced in that, I'm sure the elementary school is. Left out of that also, so. We're, we're going to get through it, we knew this year when we started it was going to be a tough year. We're going to have to figure out how to make it work and we're going to keep rolling and make it work. But you get on with the rezoning, as you know, because of the school reconfigurations and some capacity issues, we saw that they were going to be a need to rezone. We did a stop rezone a year prior and seems like every few years, it's going to be time to shuffle some students around and create better situations in the schools as far as capacity is in some of the schools. So for this rezone, I've got it on the, on the projector up here and on the board. I know it's hard to read the map, I provided y'all with, with the handouts. And I want to thank the print shop, they have one of the kids that's well versed in the, in the program and one of the assistants there, they helped make this map for us. We used to do three nine one one, they've been busy there. We're going to get one done through them to be a little more precise with AutoCAD, but they did a great job getting these done for us in a time of demand, get the presentation done. So me saying that, it's just sometimes hard to see where the color is bleeding together when you make it small. Where it may look like a road is in one zone, typically the roads divide the zones. But sometimes because of busing, it's necessary for that entire road to go to one school instead of one side, go to one school, other side go to the other. For example, like Shellfield Road, because of that busing situation. If you live on Shellfield Road, you'll go to Hillcrest Elementary. So where other roads like the bypass or Rucker Boulevard, because it's a four lane, we're not going to have kids going back and forth across the road, they typically will divide the zone. And then north side goes to one school, south side goes to the other school, or east side, however it's confused there. What we did was we broke down what we had with all the data we had in our transportation program to figure out the best way to move some of the kids around to provide some extra room at each one of the schools while not changing, you know, the entire dynamics of the school. We received a lot of title loan funds and we received them at every school except for one. But we did that to maintain, maintain that in our schools. Just wanted to point a few things out, the zones are going to, going to create space at each school. More space at some than others, but we have some that, that have a little bit more potential for growth right now with some already planned developments and things of that sort that we have to kind of take into consideration. Another thing that might happen as we go forward is would be tuition. You know, we never know, some people may decide not to pay the tuition, that may change us a little bit. Try to allow for that and also kindergarten, we've just kind of got to give it our best estimate based on the last three or four years of how kindergarten should look coming into this year, estimate those. But just to point out a few things, this will affect elementary schools, but while it affects elementary schools, it also affects the junior high schools. Except we're trying to stay with the true feeder pattern. You know, up until this point, Dolphin and Hillcrest, Hillcrest and Holly Hill fed Dolphin and then the other schools fed Copperville. So we're, we're still going to have that pattern, but because of the elementary schools change a little bit, there will be a few students like there are every year, there's no time where you can change it where that doesn't affect anybody prior to your school and maybe in one school one year, one school the next year. That's probably the most unfortunate part about rezoning is having to change their school during their time at a different school. But just to point out, I'll come over here. Some of the roads that changed a little bit was taking a little bit out of Holly Hill zones. We did that prior with the, with this section out here and let's just set it up here and do this. Which was outside of City Limits, we did a spot rezone last year with that, you know, the continued need to move, get us out of Holly Hill. So this Flugby neighborhood and all the way down to Shellfield Road to include the area of Beacon Ridge, Free Lane and Eagle Lane, which are townhomes and apartments. So students say they'll all be rezoned into Hillcrest. Of course, that's going from Holly Hill to Hillcrest, so that won't affect any of the junior high kids because there were already going to be zones for Dolphin. But will affect them is the Hillcrest zone that was west of eighty four, which will now be the new, or early education centers. These kids were before in Hillcrest zone. So there's a possibility, and I looked, there's probably out of all the zones, about twenty five kids that affect, that are seventh graders. Going into eighth grade, it'll be changing schools. So that's another big part of it here as a change. The other change we're going to do, that will affect Junior High because it's the smallest part affected, is down here in Holly Hill. Scroll that up, right at this lower section here that goes to Holly Hill, this is the neighborhood of Copperville, Oak Copperville Junior High School. In the past, when it got time for the Holly Hill kids to go to Dolphin, this group of kids, we left at Copperville. For obvious reasons, they were able to walk to school. It was their neighborhood school, but now that Copperville is all the way across town and out in circle there, they don't have the ability to walk to school. And we're going to keep them as a feeder school for the kids they're going to school with, you know, K through six. So they'll continue to just go to Dolphin. I think that only affects one child this year that's a seventh grader that lives in that, so I'm making a mistake. But those are the things we're going to have to do, that's the next step for us is going to be notifying all the kids that this is going to affect. So we'll begin with the principals and in the past, principals will reach out to those students to welcome them to their new schools. You see the other big change in Pine Dale, and for y'all that have been around for a long period of time, this is kind of where Pine Dale looked back from Dr. Thomas was the principal at Pine Dale. Pine Dale will now cover Copperville Road area and east of one sixty seven, all the way up to Level Plains. I know Level Plains is out of City Limits. And we tell them that we reserve the opportunity to move them as needed, but since we're reconfiguring, the expansion of the zones now will be a little more natural and with the open space, it'll be able to stay more consistent now until, you know, we have an occupancy problem as far as that goes. If y'all, I know there's a lot to cover with this. Y'all have any questions specific to the rezone, you know, we can, we can discuss those, but this is, this will also create a need for transportation, like we talked about before. It's going to cut time off of our transportation, time for kids on the bus, taking away one school that every bus has to go all the way from downtown straight to the early end to pick up one to two students. It's going to get the kids back into their home schools with their older siblings too, which will create benefit for a lot of parents that have multiple children in school. But if you have any questions, we're going to get this out. If this is acceptable, we'll be getting this out early next week. And we'll have a list on our website with a link where people can, if you have a problem with visual part of the map, you'll be able to click and search your particular road. It'll tell you exactly what's junior high or what elementary school you're on.
So Jason, how many, at least this is impact, would have gone to an A school, but it wouldn't be a difference.
Oh, I forget, I know the number of kids.
Well, kids, how about that?
Well, I know that in, when I just looked at the, the impact on the junior high kids that are already in the junior highs, there's about twenty five of those. Now, in the elementary school, there's going to be more. I didn't bring that particular number, I could, I could give it for you pretty quick. But it's a pretty, it's more than just in amount. Because we're moving, we're talking about moving, you know, a hundred kids possibly from, I'm saying the age of, from Holly Hill over into Hillcrest, so there'll be some of those, and some of those aren't brand new, because some of those are kindergartners, so they've never been to Holly Hill. So they won't necessarily go to the first grade to Holly Hill or go to the first grade to Hillcrest, so they won't know if it makes any difference there. You know, as far as second through fifth graders, they'll be a significant number.
That's what I was looking for, wanted in school now.
Right, that's why we need to change. And we've done that every time we rezone, that's been a factor. And we find out the kids are really resilient, they adapt to the situation. I think parents sometimes, any change affects people, right? And people resist change, but a lot of times, you know, we hear that and then the kids, the kids have a great experience at their new school. So it was not a school in Enterprise that I wouldn't put my child in. And mine attended more than one school because of moving, when I was here, I didn't have a choice whether I went.
So I think you said something about the theater, theater schools, so does that, are they set out to where if you went to the elementary school?
Yes, sir. It'll still be Hillcrest and Holly Hill will be Dolphin. And the numbers, the way the numbers are going to work out with that is this year's number, Copperville will stay about exactly the same as they were. Dolphin, they've been down a little bit, we've got some changes in class orders for whatever reason under the years here. It's like you have a huge sixth grade class at one school in a bar. But in the next, we did it, we broke it down over what this is going to look like over the next three, five years. And in three years, it's going to catch up to be a little more even, to even them out. But if we try to even them out right now, in three years, Dolphin would be way higher than Copperville. Copperville's got more capacity than Dolphin's got. So thought it was going to be better to leave them the way they are right now. We'll look through here down the road at something else, big changes, we could always stop rezone. And one of the changes there that doesn't affect our feeder pattern is, you know, Fort Rucker also feeds us. So we've thought about that, if that comes down to being an adjustment, that may be an adjustment that doesn't affect our feeder pattern. Whereas say going to Copperville, this is going to, we go to Dolphin. And the way we run the bus is we could even split them up, if that was necessary. Which we don't want to split up families, but besides that, that could be a possibility too.
Of the map, oh, I knew this one. You got one? One of the things that we've done in the past that's been very successful is it's never just sending a letter out to a parent or just doing a robo call or something like that. We have the principals, like Mr. Trump said, reach out personally to the parent who has children in the lower school, welcome them, invite them in, and then of course, there'll be a small number that they will not be able to reach and then we'll reach them another way. But that's always worked real well for us, getting that kind of principal and with the result. Just a little bit more of a personal touch. Okay, well, thank you, thanks so much.
Board, you've been provided with a proposed update to the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one salary schedule with all the changes that have been read. Is my recommendation that you approve the updates to the salary schedule?
You have heard the recommendation to approve the updates to the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one salary table. May I have a motion? May I have a sentence? Is there any discussion? All in favor of approving the updated salary table, please raise your argument.
Board, I would like to recommend that we enter into an agreement with L B Y D Engineering for turf replacement at Robcat Stadium. And that's an engineering program.
Board, you've heard Mr. Paul's recommendation to enter into an agreement with L B Y D Engineering for turf replacement at Robcat Stadium. May I have a motion to approve? May I have a sentence? Sentence?
It's, it's not maintenance free. Nothing that we have is maintenance free. What we're looking at is a infill, a special infill that is actually about thirty degrees cooler than the tire from Rover that you find in ninety nine, forty nine percent of the stadiums where, you know, if it's ninety degrees outside, it could be a hundred and thirty on the turf. We found there's a product that's made out of pine chips. And they, they, there's some kind of a process. I went and actually visited a stadium that's got it, and there's only one in our area, it's at Martin Child's High School. There's several universities that are using it, but it's, it's been around for a little while. It's, you know, they process it and it's smooth, so it doesn't splinter. The abrasion effect is far less when students, when your student athletes fall on it. There's a lot less splash. You won't, when you watch TV, you see the guys, they drag their feet and it comes up behind them like that, it's a big splash. It doesn't be that, and in fact, when it gets wet, it actually absorbs the water, it becomes heavier and it won't migrate. And besides that, it's just better for the environment. You have the tire from Rover, as you know, at Enterprise High School, we have the wetlands over there. That stuff goes down the drain out into the wetlands and into, you know, the woods, which isn't good. Well, tires can be hard for the rest of the, the.
Yeah, it will be, it will be.
But we're, we're seriously considering that product, we feel like that's better. You get a much more natural bounce for the ball. You don't get the bounce back when you plant your foot, which can cause injuries when you plant it and it reverberates back up. That can be bad for your joints, but we've got a lot of good reports on that, so that's what we're trying. But as far as maintenance, you do have to re-fluff that every now and then. They've got, it comes with a brush and you pull it behind a tractor and it kind of brushes it and puts it back into place every now and then, which this doesn't migrate very, very badly. And probably every six or seven years, you've got to get some more of that pine material and just spread out there on field like you would spread fertilizer. Matt, that's about it, isn't it?
There's going to be a lot less maintenance than what we're doing right now. Right now, we have to cut that field basically every day.
Yeah, we spend a lot of money on that every, every year, so. We feel like this is special, just give you a much more natural field than the traditional. just a much more natural field than the traditional or what most people use, uh, since it's in that surface right now.
I suppose mainly asking was the reasoning, I'm sorry, but you got it.
Yeah, yeah, um, we got the, uh, we got the bond issue and we're spending about a hundred thousand dollars a year on the field. And so the bond issue will be able to easily take care of the installation of the turf. And so after about year eight, uh, we'll be able to realize the investment will be money you have. So, once you take care of it, you replenish the infill the way you're supposed to, you should be able to get twelve years out of it. Um, some don't last as long because they don't maintain it as they go. You would say? All in favor of entering into an agreement with LBYD Engineering, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Uh, board, I also like to recommend that we enter into an agreement with Arneira Davis Williams Architects for the replacement of HVAC systems, windows and roofing at several locations as a construction, as well as the construction of a new storm shelter at ECTC. Uh, all of these items were part of our approved five-year capital plan, uh, back in the fall. Board, you have heard Mr. Paul's recommendation to enter into an agreement with Arneira Davis Williams Architect. May I have a motion? May I have a second? Is there any discussion? All in favor of entering to entering into this agreement, please raise your right hand. Board, I'd like to request permission to purchase a Snap-on Precision Measuring Instruments Kit in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and forty dollars and forty-five cents for our engineering department. Snap-on is a sole provider of this system and is also listed on the Sourcewell Cooperative Pricing List, so they're not a need to go fit for this product. Uh, the system will also provide our students with the needed training required by the National Coalition of Certification Centers. And this kit also will allow for the development of a dual enrollment course, uh, ECTC in conjunction with Enterprise State Community College. And if our students choose to pair this course with a math, science or English course, the cost of both classes will be paid by the students through a grant. Board, you have heard Mr. Paul's recommendation to approve the purchase of a Snap-on Precision Measuring Instrument. May I have a motion to approve? May I have a second? Is there any discussion? All in favor of approving the purchase, please raise your right hand. Thank you. I would like to request permission to hire up to three additional students to work at our Performing Arts Center in the coming months. Uh, with the current restrictions on the number of people we can allow inside the Performing Arts Center, we would like to add a video recording component. Uh, also, there's an need to train younger students to take on this responsibility with so many, so many of our experienced students being seniors this year. Board, you have heard Mr. Paul's recommendation to hire up to three additional students, pack workers. May I have a motion? May I have a second? Is there any discussion? All in favor of hiring up to three additional student pack workers, please raise your right Board, we have several turf replacements that I would like to present as one consent agenda item. It is my recommendation that you approve all consent agenda items as presented. Board, you have heard Mr. Paul's recommendation to approve all consent agenda items. May I have a motion? May I have a second? Is there any discussion? All in favor of approving all consent agenda items, please raise your right hand. Board, you have a copy of the personnel list in your pockets, leaves, resignations, employment, and athletic supplement. Board, it is my recommendation that you approve the personnel action items as listed in the personnel list. Board, you have heard Mr. Paul's recommendation to approve all personnel, I have a motion. May I have a second? Is there any discussion? All in favor of approving the personnel, uh, action items, please raise your right Couple of comments, so that everyone will keep in part family in their, in their thoughts and prayers of this, you know, the family is a wonderful family and they're going through a very, very difficult time, uh, right now with one of their children. And, uh, we can all make that part of our day, uh, to begin and be in, uh, pray for them. Um, and so the heavy part that Mr. Clark has resigned his position as board member. Uh, we live by the Aladdin Association of School Boards, we receive notification as well as our city council. And we're still in there. Um, we do have an awful lot of good things going on in the school system, you heard about some of them, uh, this evening. I wanna mention the young lady Evelyn Holmes Smith, uh, who won a state champion, uh, wrestling title for us last weekend. I'm not sure that we've, we've never had a wrestling champion.
I'm hoping you're right.
Yeah. But Evelyn's a special young lady, um, she also runs cross-country and she plays soccer. Uh, she won the hundred and five pound weight division, uh, for, for the girls, and she's gonna be competing against the boys, uh, coming up. And, uh, she's, I think she's twelve and two or fourteen and two against boys this year. So good money is on Evelyn, uh, for bringing the tournament. And she's an eighth grader. So she won her first day championship as an eighth grader. So maybe many more to come, a lot of hard work, and she, she is a hard worker. And Larai Castro plays sport, uh, another young lady, she's, uh, the eleventh grade in the hundred and three category, uh, over the weekend. Boys' basketball team that are playing tonight, uh, they, uh, won the area with a perfect six and oh record and Good Sherrillson's doing a fantastic job with those, those young women. And finally, Mary Kim Burm is a senior at Enterprise High School and she competed in, uh, distinguished young women in Alabama and won the following awards, B Year Best Self-Essay, Fitness, Self-Expression, Talent, and was a top eight finalist among forty-seven other very bright young ladies competing for scholarships. And just so, very proud of Mary Kim and what she's accomplished and really everyone who's been instrumental in her success and know-guessing people here, who have been involved in helping with the mock interviews, she called well of them and, and Cherie's done that, so we've all done that, uh, up here, but, uh, pulling those, those, those folks together and have them come in and, and do the mock interviews has really helped them, uh, when they go and compete at the state level. So real proud of those kids. That's all I got.
But one more, while we're preparing for the girls, um, they get a game, they lock down on their championship.
They all have to go home to the girls. All right, and we're hosting, uh, both, right? Yeah, we're hosting both. Yeah. Thanks. I want to receive this money. Any more comments?
I just like to say we need to, because I like the superintendent said that, um, we need to continue to play prayer with Clark family. Uh, we're a wonderful city, Enterprise is really a good and loving city, and I think we could all come together in prayer and pray for that family, but that's an awesome, awesome
The next board meeting will be held on Tuesday, February twenty-third at five o'clock. We have information regarding real estate that we need to enter into executive session to discuss. Mr. Shirley, can you certify that it is appropriate for the board to enter into executive session for this map?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, please recommend to confirm that it is appropriate topic for the executive session.
May I have a motion to enter into executive session? May I have a second? Is there any discussion? All in favor of entering to executive session, please raise your right hand. I would like to announce that there will be no further business handed handle after executive session. We'll interact with the board, room only to attend the meeting.
I'll give you one second. I want to introduce Jason Moore, Chief Manu, Dr. Spurges, Dr. Pearl Hudson.